This conference will now be recorded.
Another rates study.
So not necessarily.
It's been wonderful.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Since we asked for a race.
Oh, yeah. Really, yes.
It's been great.
So I need the notice? Please take notice that the Lake Placid Village Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, in person in North Elba Town Hall, 2693 Main Street, first floor, Lake Placid, New York, and via go-to meeting at 4:45 PM concerning proposed revisions to the Lake Placid Village electric rates. Take further notice that said proposed revision of rates for electric services provided to customers of the Village of Lake Placid, New York, for the purpose of making necessary revisions to the electric rates for residential and commercial users of the municipal Village of Lake Placid Electric Department. You may join the meeting in person or via go-to meeting. A link will be provided by end-of-day Friday prior to the meeting. It will be the same link as for that day's board meeting. All interested persons are invited and will be given an opportunity to be heard. The proposed revised scheduled rates will be posted on the Village website and available for inspection, including supporting calculations at the Village Clerk's office during regular business hours. Sign Anita Anthony Espling, Village Clerk.
Okay, this public hearing is open. Do anyone have any comment?
There's one person in person. Do you have any comments?
We usually take it in person, people first, so first. All right, here we go.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, my name is Scott Loulis. I'm a resident here at Lake Placid. Came familiar with the village when I attended National Sports Academy back in 2009, Syracuse, New York. Did postgraduate year over there, lived right over in this house over there. Went to Western New England University after Springfield, Massachusetts. Majored in Finance. I had a minor in Enterprise Resource Solutions. The reason why I'm here is because of the Lake Placid Emergency Room. What I've been reading of that.
So this is just for the electric rates?
Electric rate. Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll speak later.
Okay. Great.
Does anyone online have a comment they'd like to make?
Hi, this is Laura. Oh, maybe.
We can hear you. Please go ahead.
Okay, great. Hi. I stopped by the Village Hall today and I thought that Mindy's explanation of the rate increase and how it will be implemented was really helpful. One thing that I thought was true, and she confirmed, that I think it would be nice if people understood that we're all in this together in the sense that the more electricity we use as a community, the more impacted our rates would be. It's not just how much you as an individual use. I don't know, I'm not explaining that very well, but she did a great job of it. So anyway, I just think that the rate increases are terrific in terms of what they're going to be, the increase will be used for, but I wish that people had a better sense of how it works altogether. And I am also Dark Skies advocate, so any sort of progress we can make on that front, I think would be terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marty Schubert. I live in the town of North Elba. My wife and I feel that the electric department does a tremendous job. And if Kimball thinks he needs a little increase, then we're all for it. And that's what we have to say. Good job, Kimball.
Marty, you're going to notice we have a small increase in the base rate for the decrease in the PPAC moving forward. Anyone else online?
I have to say, two positives for a public hearing.
Feelings are on Facebook.
Yes, I am. On the other.
No, I haven't either.
So I guess we can keep this open till right for 14:00. Is anybody else?
I don't know about the hospital. What do you think?
I don't know. I'm not with Eric. He's the new CEO.
So what's the prognosis?
So actually, they're not allowed.
That's what I'd heard. I couldn't remember where I heard that.
So is it a done deal? There's no appealing yet?
I'm not sure where they're at with the taxes, but that's.
Okay. So maybe that's why it hasn't been in the papers yet.
I know I heard it.
Make a record meeting, Peter? Make a record meeting?
Starting from 5 o'clock, yeah.
Hello. I'm Lisa Haines. Hello. Please have a seat. We're.
We're in the right place, right?
We are in the right place. We're finishing up the public hearing before we usually start at 12:00. Let me do this. Oh, no, it's a walk of the party. Welcome to.
I missed the opportunity.
That's right.
Just sorry.
No, no, no. It's all good.
Yeah. A little crunchy.
Who was that? Samantha.
Doesn't anyone know about it?
I don't know.
That was the only one I was talking to.
See it happening. Prepared.
Your skin looks heavy.
Yeah.
Because I thought it was just one of those states in practice.
Set the tone to Wednesday.
Oh.
Awesome. What are you skinning?
Skin.
You get to go.
Yeah. I got a little dark. Are you skinning?
Jackie.
They call them. Call them why it's gonna get you.
Yeah.
What are you doing? So I think yours got a lot of life.
He did it.
Private, do you have a comment on the new proposed electric rates?
5:00.
Okay, this is the 5:00. So we're here to hold a hearing on the proposed electric rates. So we'll get into the regular meeting. We have a motion to approve the regular board minutes, February 6th.
Actually, I did not finish. So we will need to move to the next. I can need to move to the next meeting.
Okay.
I was kind of sad.
Okay, I guess we'll open our regular board meeting. Motion to open the board meeting.
I'll make the motion.
I don't actually think they need to, but that's all.
Okay, these three of us are willing to say hi. Now, regular board meetings, February 6th, 2023. Can I have a motion?
Table it.
Table it, because you don't have it.
Right, I'll make the motion to table.
I'll second.
Now, we have a motion to accept the proposed electric rates recommended by our treasurer.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to agree to the agreement of meetings of county village?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All for it. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And we have a motion to agree for the county to meet the beach house Ackerman room for early voting. It's June, right?
Yep, both in June and in late October, early November.
Okay.
Both early voting periods.
We have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. But just, did we agree, is the sports council using what is happening? I can't remember. We discussed it.
So they have a lease agreement with us. I don't remember if it's until April or through April, but they're largely done with the space. And the Ackerman room really reverted back to us once.
Right.
You know.
So that building and we were. Who was the lawyer that became the county?
Allison. She is now going to become our neighbor on the second floor, apparently for whatever reason.
County wouldn't pay.
No, yes. So I don't know if you're familiar with the room that the mediation guy used to use about once a year.
Yep.
The town apparently asked him to leave to make out room for Allison, so she will be joining us on the second floor. So for the moment, I mean, it'll be something for further discussion, but after April, the larger part of the beach house will once again be empty, so if there's anything.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the police department's recommendation for our.
No, did we, did the, I know you.
Yeah.
Yes, we did. Well, we did.
Okay, sorry. Thank you, just making sure.
Part-time hire. You have a gentleman's name?
Matthew Ross.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need approval for appointment of inspectors for upcoming village election.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we get a motion for our litigant firm to travel to Syracuse for an engineering workshop, March 9th to 10th, with all the normal expenses.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. And who is this?
This is also electric. This is for Zach Ford.
So Zach Ford, that's right. Kimball was telling me. To approve his CDL training in Platteville, New York.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now approve rescinding the name of a private road. Need to mention the private road?
It is rescinding the Miller's Way name because it was not done through proper procedure with the county.
Okay, then is it still there or the highest highway removed it?
It is still there. Technically, I believe the town put the sign up. The town has to agree to this too, but this is a village resolution too.
Okay, so our part is done.
Yeah.
So all in favor? Who's gonna make the motion?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question about that, Jackie?
No.
You did for a moment, so.
Okay.
Now for treasurer?
One other thing came up that I know Peter saw. I don't know if each of you saw the email. There's an I Love New York commercial shoot happening this Friday. Roost reached out to me because there were like three spots and three very specific spots in the MBT parking lot. They only need them for 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, but as we all know, unless they lock them off in the morning, they're not going to get them. It's lower or whoever. I think lower, the way they explained it, I think it's the ones like right up against the Starbucks building, like the one they said parallel to Main Street. So I think there's exactly three spots there. That one restaurant's back door comes out there.
In front of the restrooms?
Yes.
Yeah.
They just want to park their cars. It's not, they're not tuning there. They just want to park their cars there. So the question is, is that okay? And do we charge them, which technically at the going rate would, if we did it for 12 hours, then it would be $72 total for the three spots, but.
Do they need those spots specifically or do they just need some spots in the general?
They want them specifically. I don't know about need, but that's what they were.
However, they've got camera equipment in there.
Yeah.
This is marketing.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it's a, yeah, I mean, I think it's a good return on investment. My perspective. So I figure.
Yeah, sure.
It would be, yes, what about the charging part? Just because I know sometimes Main Street is sensitive about those things, but they did point out to me that, yes, this is a.
Marketing.
Yeah, for us.
It's going to be challenging, though. It's a busy weekend. It's the PV Association.
Yeah, and the end of midwinter break for everybody else in the state, so.
Brad's guys have to go over to blood first thing.
Yeah, right.
I'm fine with it. I don't need to charge her.
No, I'm fine with this.
Okay.
Okay. So is that a Jackie and a Kate first and second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is all.
Thanks for coming. Do they need any stickers or pins?
I'm sure Roost will provide that.
Can I have the one? Yeah, let me do this one, please.
I will. I should have let you do that was quick.
Yeah, she just happened to be there and I jumped on her.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any compare bills?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
New business?
New business? Is there any new business? Is new business?
Is there any new business? Oh, well, I guess it's old business, but do you want to announce what launched today?
The new website launched today. Yes, we still need to, you know, make some tweaks, but.
Absolutely.
So.
So if we type in Lake Placid Village website, it's going to be the one?
No, you've got to type in North Elba. And I still don't believe, I think we can have two URLs. Yes, it's a challenge, but, and I will talk to Patrick about that.
Patrick Kedish is.
Yes, Patrick Kedish.
Because we could also ask Scott what his opinion is.
Yes, because.
No reason why we can't do that and have a redirect.
Right.
So, yeah.
Right. Because what we had decided in the meeting was that there would be two URLs.
Right.
NorthElba.LakePlacid, LakePlacid.NorthElba. I don't know how North Elba got in there first, but we'll figure that out.
But right now, if anyone goes to either old site, it's redirected to the new site.
That's correct.
And importantly, how is it showing up on internet searches?
Not yet, only because it just.
Like it just in terms of, you know, kind of the, you know, that's almost more important than the URL.
Yeah. If we can't type in now North Elba Lake Placid.
It'll show up.
It'll show up.
Yeah, or, I mean, I assume if you type in Village of Lake Placid, it'll go to the old one and redirect it.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Because people from out of town, Lake Placid's.
Yes, that was our, that was our argument, absolutely. And even the town agreed.
Really biased.
Yes, I know. I got it. No, you're very well taken.
Put yourself in the shoes of somebody from.
Oh, yeah. No, no, I agree.
I wonder what North Elba is. Okay. Anything else? Sold business? Correspondence?
Yeah, we actually had two pieces of correspondence on the same topic, both Trisha Preston. She wrote us a personal thank you for supporting the MatPat program during FISU. And then the school district did a resolution thanking us along with all the other donors for the MatPat program.
We should thank them for the MatPat.
That was amazing.
Yeah. It was great from kids. Whoever thought of that.
My daughter loved it. I mean, so much for them to do. It was awesome.
She actually got swag.
Yeah. Nice. Even my daughter swag. That's the only correspondence.
Okay. We have to. I need to.
All right. Yeah, like I was saying, my name is Scott Billup Lewis, head of the National Sports Academy. The reason why I'm here is because of reading about enclosure of Lake Placid Emergency Room. Just a quick background, don't want to bore anybody with it, but actually, you know, there were some interesting things here. It is, first off, I fell off a ladder in 2012, which required surgery in my arm. Screws and plates were put in on both sides. In 2015, I was involved in a hit and run accident. One of a golf cart petticoat in Austin, Texas, where my head hit the windshield. I was concussed and probably inches away from a broken neck. I'm not ashamed to admit, after these incidences, I developed an alcohol use problem. And it was something I had to address, which later, in Austin, Texas, in 2019, I ended up being arrested for driving while intoxicated on the television show Live PD. Live PD, the show isn't live. I'm in a civil battle with Williamson County, Texas, about what they did there. What they do is they take edited and manipulate film, sometimes days, hours, days, weeks before, and then they make it into a television show. There's a man-hobby handler who's hasted death. Two months after my arrest, which the sheriff and his lawyer covered the whole thing. I'm set to go to trial for my constitution violations in the matter, January 2024. So the reason why I bring these three things up is I care about, one, access to healthcare, two, access to mental health, treating mental health, and three, just pointing out the fact that I don't have any issues battling the people in power. And it was one of our founding fathers, Patrick Henry, who said it best in his Give Me Liberty or Give Me Death speech in 1775, says, "For my part, whatever anguish of spirit it may cost, I'm willing to know the full truth, to know the worst, and to provide for it." So that brings me to the preamble of the Constitution. As we all know, we, the people of the United States, in order to build a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America. That preamble is so important to me because I do always think about provide for the general welfare. And so when I read about what's happening here and where they're taking away the emergency room at a village where the Olympics were hosted twice, we've put millions of dollars of renovation into our facilities here. The emergency room's right across the street from the United States Olympic Training Center. Whiteface Mountain is right down the road. And the CEO there is saying, if there is, I'll get the exact quote from, he says, "Major traumas in other actual emergency patients are typically transported 11 miles to Adrona Medical Center in Serenac Lake anyway." If that doesn't outrage any resident of the village, there's a major problem. Because it's to provide for the general welfare, not to provide wherever has to leave his pocket. his pockets and account, getting what they want. It makes absolutely no sense for this to be happening. And so when when our mayor says we live in a community that needs good healthcare, we also have a lot of tourists and we also have a lot of sporting events, and all three depend on that healthcare. So we're going to have to do the best we can to make it work for everybody. No, we need to make the emergency room work for the residents of Lake Placid, period. And we have to do whatever we need to do to make sure that happens. Otherwise, we are sacrificing promoting the general welfare. It makes absolutely no sense. So the reason why I'm here again is I know that reading through this, there's been some transparency issues with getting to the facts. But what I also know from being here for about a year plus now, is there seems to be a culture of gaslighting. So getting to those facts and getting to that transparency is difficult. So we need to know as residents what really is going on with this and to get the answers from Adirondack Medical Center before it's too late, because this can't happen. I'm saying if this happens, I mean, how are you guys going to look your constituents in the face and say that you care about their well-being? Honestly? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Number one?
Great. And thank you for the time. I wanted to mention that. With the N, it's been gone.
Did we discuss anything? No, we were interested in the rest of the question.
Thank you.
I was waiting almost on anything. You're free to know.
Motion to.
Oh, that's right.
Anyone online have any questions or comments? Lauren?
Oh, yeah, she was before. She was, yeah.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn with the meeting?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Peter.